All right. At this time, I'd like to call the July 27th, 2021, Caswell County Planning Board meetings in order. I'd like to thank everyone for being here, those in attendance and the members. I know it's a tough time of the year for farmers, and we thank the farmers who were able to make it today. Have approval of the agenda. Everyone had a chance to review the agenda. Hearing no feedback, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Harris. Second by Mr. Daniel. All those in favor, please let me know by saying aye. Public comments, Mr. Hovind. Do you have any public comments today?
Yes, sir. I believe we do.
So there are two signing sheets over there. The one with the hot, excuse me, the highlight at the top is for the cell tower comments. But you may just want to clarify and give folks the opportunity to comment in whichever fashion they would like. So start off with the public comments, and then we'll go to... All right. Mr. Landen Woods, 4810 Old US Highway 86, North Yanceville.
Yes. Never been to one of these, so I guess I'll stand. Yeah, so I'm Landen Woods, live in Pearlie, North Carolina, just above here. I'm a business owner. My business is called Revision Solar LLC. I started it about four years ago, and in that time, we have grown. Now we're in four states. We're not there by physical locations, but we do work in Maryland, Virginia, Kentucky, and here in North Carolina. And I started that business from home, speaking on the zoning issue, not the cell tower, of course. And my concerns are that with the zoning laws will be best, I believe that I will be grandfathered in, and I don't even think I'm in the district being voted on. But my concerns are that that will eventually spread to me, and my children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, so on and so forth, will not have the same freedom that I've had to start my business, to quit my job and fulfill the American dream of telling my boss that I can do better, branching off and doing what I wanted to do, and creating wealth for myself and my family. And if you look at the largest businesses in the U.S., Apple, Amazon, Google, Microsoft, even Hewlett Packard, Disney, from way back, they all started from someone in their garage. And they started that, they pioneered themselves, and they branched out and then made something great in this country. And I feel that these policies can stifle economic growth, they will hinder innovation, entrepreneurship, and especially jobs. I mean, how many jobs would be lost if those large companies never set foot out? And I think that if they had had to have a physical location rather than starting off in their garage, they would have never actually made it as a company. They never would have branched out and done what they did. So my little two cents here today is that I feel that these policies will slow down economic growth in the future in this county, and they will hinder people from branching out and doing what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. All right. Would any other public comments, Mr. Hovind?
No, sir. That's it for the general public comments. We do have comments for the cell tower.
Folks, those of you who signed up for the cell tower public hearing, we'll get to that in a few minutes. You're welcome to speak during our public comments, but we'll be getting to the public hearing here shortly. All right. So no further comments, Mr. Hovind. Then we'll move on to the approval of the June 21 meeting minutes, because everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Hearing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve them.
Motion by Mr. Hovind. You have a second. Second by Mr. Foster. Those in favor, please let me know by saying aye. All those opposed, like so. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have a new business, item number five, wireless communication tower public hearing. And we will need the motion to go into the public hearing today. So I'll entertain a motion at this time. Motion by Mr. Harris. I think that was Mr. Daniel in favor. All those opposed, like so. Motion carries. We'll now enter the public hearing. Mr. Hovind, do we know if Mr. Barker has logged on and is with us online?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barker should be available. Mr. Barker, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We certainly can.
All right. So, Mr. Barker, we've started the public hearing, and you're free to discuss your application or give any input as you see fit at this time.
Great, great. Thank you. For the record, Doug Barker, 304 Spring Water Trail, Woodstock, Georgia, 30188. I'm here representing Vertical Bridge Development on their application before you for a 250-foot cellular communications tower located off of Mize Road in the High Towers area of Caswell County. The property is just under 25 acres, 24.48 acres. The tower meets or exceeds all of the requirements set forth in the Caswell County code. And we're back out here just, you know, continuing to fill gaps and continuing to try to get coverage out here to the county. The towers that we had previously approved will be constructed in late August and September. So those will actually be out and on air before the end of this year. This one will be on air before the end of the year as well, provided it's approved, of course. And you should start seeing significant difference in the amount of coverage that the county has in some of these outlying areas. As we know, the wireless communication is the primary communications for most folk. And this is going to give not only access for them to use those phones for, you know, their personal calls, but also immediate access to emergency services. I know when ambulances are out in these areas, they've got to have trouble communicating as well. But people being able to call 911, it's going to help facilitate that as well. You know, as I said, we meet the code and all of the requirements in it. I'm just here to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Barker, can you briefly go over the site plan with us?
Sure. If you guys have a copy of the site plan there. We're coming off of Mize Road, moving across property that's owned by Harry Carter, which is my property owner Bobby Carter's father. We cross his property and then on to Bobby Carter's property. We are tower height from the property lines on Bobby Carter's property, but we are well over two times tower height from the roadway. And, you know, we basically border Carter's properties in the closest area, families' property in the closest area. And the compound surrounded by a wood fence that cannot see through, and then additionally surrounded by landscaping to provide a buffer there as well. It will not have any guy wires. It is a completely self-supporting tower. So no guy wire stretching out across the field or anything like that. It is just located in an agricultural field that's currently being farmed. But we're just basically taking a quarter acre out of the middle of that 25-acre parcel and moving forward with the tower.
Mr. Barker, can you give us an idea of where the closest residential structures are in relation to the proposed location?
Nearest structure is Mr. Carter's house on the same piece of property. Outside of that, bear with me one second, I should be able to tell you. It's going to be 700 feet roughly to the nearest resident. That's not Mr. Carter. You're crossing another parcel of property and then the roadway to get to it.
Any of the members have questions for Mr. Foster? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barker. I probably got ahead of myself there, Mr. Hovind. I think now would be the appropriate time to hear public input from the folks that signed up to the public.
Yes, sir. I received two public comments meeting emails, and then we have seven individuals who signed up today for public comments. So I'm happy to go and whatever word you want.
Could you read the emails first?
Yes, sir. First comment is from Earl in Charlotte Smith at 954 Corbett Ridge Road in Meven, North Carolina. They say, "We would like to say we are in favor of the construction of a new wireless communications tower on the property at 206 Mize Road, Yanceville, North Carolina, 27379. We feel this will benefit and service for many people in our area. We cannot get any service in places such as Highway 86 South or just past South Elementary School, and other places would get very little service. This would definitely help the Corbett Ridge Road residents as well as many of the people in this area." The next comment is from Jeanette Woodson. She says, "I live on Highway 86 South about three miles from Mize Road. I have Verizon Wireless as my cellphone carrier, and I am pleased. I think a cellphone tower in our community is a great idea, and I'm excited that it's coming to Caswell County. Our county needs better internet, cellphone, and phone service. Hopefully, we will see more interest in these types of services." Those are all of the email public comments.
Thank you, sir. And you can start with the folks assigned up, please. Janie Cobb, 477 Mize Road, Yanceville, North Carolina.
Okay.
Ms. Jane, your call brought you.
I wanted to start out by saying, I don't like the cell tower being that close. After researching FCC, different people, even other countries, anybody within a quarter of a mile is subject to have tumors, radiation damage, headaches, and it's really bad for children. It can cause, it can cause them fall, fall, it can cause birth defects. Our neighbor, which is very close to, will be close to the tower, has six children, all under 10. Yeah. And she just had one. That's why she's not here.
This past month, the youngest was born in July. I'm next on the list to speak, and this is my wife. My name is Mike Cobb. Can I jump in with her?
Well, she's finished. I think you could.
I can. But look, I too want to voice my opinion that no, I don't want it that close to us. The research we've done, I've said that residents within a quarter of a mile, and we've got probably six or seven homes within a quarter of a mile of this tower, this location, this tower. I apologize to you. I affect the world, I affect the world of your dad, but I got to stand against it. And the other thing that we found out, the children and senior citizens, and as you see, many of us right here live on Mize Road are senior citizens, the effects or the negative health effects are quadruples. In other words, for a child, the neurological damage, that risk is quadruple. For me, who's already had bypass surgery, for my wife, who's got, who's in a wheelchair because of spinal tumors, and she also has an implanted medical device. They say that if you've got an implanted medical device, you should not be within a quarter of a mile. We can't just move because this tower was covered. And we're here, just trying to get some reconsideration on this location. A quarter of a mile away, I wish Bobby's land was a quarter of a mile away, and I would have no objections, but it's not. My house is much closer than that. The house with six children, all under the age of 10, it's almost right across the road from where the tower was going, just down a little bit across the road. It's not even 700, more than 700 feet away. Now, both of those comments that you read just now in favor of the cell tower, one was on in Meven location, and one was like three miles away. Well, if I lived there, I wouldn't have any objections either. Fact is, I wouldn't have any objections if it was just a quarter of a mile. Jackie here owns some land where it was a sawmill, just right the road. And to put it that, I would not object, because all of us are outside of that quarter of a mile limitation. And we just feel like we should reconsideration done on the side. We don't feel comfortable with it. And to put it that, knowing ahead of time that those potential problems exist, that's negligence for people in the community. That's absolute negligence. And I've completed saying all I got to say. Thank you for the time, and I appreciate the time to talk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, next on the list, Pam Bratcher, if I can pronounce the name correctly, 522 Mize Road, Yanceville.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity. I normally would speak extemporaneously, but you don't want me to do that today, because it'll take more than three minutes, so I'm not going to. But I want to express that, you know, we just bought our home on Mize Road, and this tower is effectively, you know, I think it's on Bobby and Jackie's property, but it's going to be in our backyard. We're going to see it all the time. I understand there's going to be tornado sirens on it, possibly. I don't know that for sure, but I've been told that there might be tornado sirens. It's not a bad thing. And I understand for the people in Meven and the people out on 86, it's not a bad thing. But like the cops, I think, you know, it's very, very close to residences. And we've had no cellphone issues since we've been here. And I mean, I feel like, you know, we're, I work from home every day. I work for Wells Fargo, and I work from home. I've had no cellphone issues. I'm on conference calls all day, every day, and I have not had one single issue with connectivity where we are. I realize that there's going to be the option to do hotspots with the cellphone carriers that lease off of that tower, which there'll probably be multiple cellphone carriers. But again, I'm not going to break the contract with who my Wi-Fi carrier is in order to spend more money with a cellphone carrier in order to have a Wi-Fi hotspot that's attached to my cellphone. I just, that's not necessary. We have the utmost respect for the landowners and the neighbors in this area, and we recognize the benefits to the Westsors, and that is not to be diminished. But we do have some concerns, and they involve, one, the aesthetic impact on the landscape. Plans do indicate that it's going to be a non-obtrusive color, but I don't know how you can have a 250-tower that's non-obtrusive. Compromising to, compromise of the existing canopy. And based on what Mr. Barker said, it is a field that's not, if it's not going to destroy trees and it's not going to destroy wildlife, that makes me feel a little bit better about that aspect of it. But I did have concerns about the environmental state, and I know that the collection and distribution lines are going to be underground to the most extent possible, but what impact does that have? Do we know what impact those lines being underground will have on farming, on impact to the soil? Any of that, do we know? Displacement of any wildlife population and the impact that displacement can endanger livestock and farm animals of, because all of that area around that field is going to be disturbed, and animals that are indigenous to those sites are going to start migrating to other places. And they're going to migrate to places where people have goats, chickens, cows, whatever. And it could create a very unsafe situation for not only the ecosystem, but for domesticated animals. Based on studies that I've read, and I echo some of what Mike and Janie have said, I read a lot of studies conducted by MIT. My father graduated from there, so I'm a little bit biased toward MIT and the fact that I think they know what they're talking about. But their science tells us that prolonged exposures of these towers can cause negative changes in brain activity, diminished physical reaction times, disturbed sleep patterns. I myself am an insomniac, and I choose not to sleep with any wireless connectivity in my sleeping chamber. None. I won't have that option if there's a huge tower over my house or behind my house. I'm stuck with it. There is negative affectation of body implants, including pacemakers and other implanted medical devices. And I have a sister who visits frequently and who has an implanted medical device, and my daughter is a quadriplegic. Our daughter's a quadriplegic, and she has an implanted medical device. So I don't, you know, at one, if they have an issue, then I can't have them come see me anymore. That's kind of crazy. So I think in closing, what I would like to say is a couple of things. I'm getting there. In closing, there's a couple of things I'd like to say. If, in spite of our concerns that tower would dislodge, which, you know, whatever, we would like inspections performed, and this might be something Mr. Barker has to address, but we would like inspections routinely performed to ensure no negative radiation or RF impacts or impacted levels detected with proactive reporting to surrounding areas or surrounding residents. I don't want to have to go out on a website and look up and find out, am I being poisoned? I want them to tell me, there's the results of that, and I want it done on a frequency. That measures to be taken, that the tower itself is not a blight on our landscape. You know, if you need to put the pretty bottle brush or the Christmas tree on top of it, do that, but we don't want it to be a blight on the landscape. And then finally, I think there should be some consideration of compensation to the adjacent property owners, because our property values are going to be impacted. Everything I've read says people don't buy homes with a cell tower in the backyard. They just don't, because there's too much not known about it. And so I would like annually an independent appraisal of those property values by the telecom companies to tell us, you know, here's where you were in 2021, here's where you are now. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comments?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure I can make out his next name. Chris?
I didn't realize that was, that was the one to speak. I think she just spoke for me.
Okay. So we can cross you off?
Yes.
You don't want to say object?
Object!
Make sure that's intended.
No, don't.
No, dude, please.
I don't, I do object. I'm changing my wife, but she's got an implanted medical device. She has a black hole in her stomach, implanted, and it can affect whether it works. She had an MRI, she actually had an MRI, and almost died because it cut the pump off. If she, if that pump gets malfunctioned because of radio frequency radiation waves, then it could seriously hurt her and got killer.
Mr. Chairman, the next name on the list, I believe, is Gary Scarlet. Is that correct? Yes, sir. 533 Mize Road, Yanceville, North Carolina.
Yep. The tower is going to be right across the street from where I live, and my neighbors, as Mr. Cobb said, she just had a new baby, and she's already got a George. I've had cancer in the past, and I moved here for the main reason, that there weren't any cell towers or anything like there are in Burlington, just to get away from that. I object stringlessly to it, but my main concerns are the health issues. It can be, you know, years away from having it there. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Scarlet. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Harry Carter, or Henry Carter?
Hi.
Harry, Harry Carter. 6875.
My name is Harry Jack. The name I call him Jack.
And 6875, Highway 158 in Eastburg.
That's right. Own property joint. And I'm for the cellphone tower, but I'm not for if they would cause what they're thinking is some cause. We've looked into it, and I've, one of the main sources that I like to look into when we have questions about cancer and the effects of it, and what causes it, I like to look into what the American Cancer Society says about it, because they're the ones that do the studying. And I can tell you from what's on the study here. At this time, there's no strong evidence that exposes RF waves as radio frequency waves. Radio frequency wave is exactly the same thing you have on an FM radio. It's the same thing you have on power lines that we give off. People's concerns about it. It's, but it's not as strong as the actual waves that's given off in a microwave. And also, it says, but that study, this study is looking at cellphone use. The amount of exposure from living near a cellphone tower typically is many times lower than the exposure from using a cellphone itself. If the tower being as high as it is, and you walk under it because you to have a negative effect and cause cancer to affect your life, then surely, if you've got a cellphone in your pocket picking up those waves, it says here that those are more damaging to you than the tower itself. You've got to put these things in perspective. Let's look at the studies each one does, and I'll give the people this, and maybe get these copies made off of it and find out how it all works. But it's worked on electronic electromagnetic spectrum, and on this, it sets the degrees of this frequency of the waves that's sent through the app. The greatest being, of course, radiation, and X-ray and gamma rays, they're on the high end of the spectrum. And yes, those waves can actually heat up metal. But this, on the low end of the spectrum, these do not. And if you've got a cellphone in your pocket, then you need to cut it off and don't use it, because the tower, it's expect, it don't expect you as bad as the cellphone you can, because you've gathered it to yourself. Also, taking consideration of a microwave. If a microwave is going to get a stronger frequency, and more likely it causes this woman's cancer and cause her device to fail. Her device may have failed because she's had a microwave in the house. I don't know that she did, maybe she don't. But if she's got a cellphone in the house, she's already been having the effect of that. And if you go through an area, if you go through an area and you've got good cell pickup, cut the thing off, it causes it to allow her to give you cancer. Think about what you're saying. Think about what you're saying, when you use a cellphone and then not putting it in the tower. Are we, you know, I know that some people say, well, it's a hassle. Well, I guarantee you, when people start putting electricity in a house, and then they see the poles going up, some said that's just a negative sign. But I don't know about y'all, I got a pole right in front of my house, and I'd rather not be that. But I don't want to live in a house where I didn't want that. I want my electricity. Let's, let's think about this thing, and what you got on it. You can, here's the data on it, on how it works. We got to understand that we ain't, we ain't living in the 18th century no more. Things don't remain the same. Times changes. Here's a man sitting here, right here, got a computer in front of the station. It hasn't been many years back, when you went into a meeting, had been writing on paper, they wouldn't even pay for the, so. Is all this negative too? I mean, let's, let's look at, look at the data and what it is.
I got a question for you.
Okay.
I got a question for you, Jackie. If it's as safe as you're saying this, why is it not legal to put them on school properties? It's not, because kids go to school six to half hours a day for getting nauseated and headaches to cause that.
All right. Everybody's had their chance to talk, okay? Mr. Carter, when you finish up, there may be more people on the list, and maybe not. We'll have a chance to talk. Let's let...
I'm not saying that there is not to be a negative effect, but what I am saying, that they've done research on it, and they have found, I'm looking at it here too. You look at your source, and I look at my source, but I don't look at the American Cancer Association. They have done studies on it, and when they've done their studies, they have found that it was no negative effect to it, so they dropped the study. It's kind of like me, I'll say it in a term maybe most of us farmers can understand. If somebody tells me there's cucumbers in my watermelon patch, I don't go to my watermelon patch day after day after day and find them cucumbers and keep looking for cucumbers. They found no negative effect, nothing that can't come. We don't know what the future may have. Some say it does, and they have done studies in other countries, and when they look at the studies that they were... And when they looked at the studies that they were doing, they were experimenting on animals and they was putting the animals in direct contact, not oh, the hundreds of feet, but directly on the animals themselves to cause the cancer. Think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Scarlet. Okay, uh, Mr. Huglen, is anyone else? Yes, sir, we have one more on the list, Bobby Carter, two oh six Mize Road, Yanceville.
Mr. Bobby Carter. Sir, I took great consideration of things that people have questioned before I decided to put this on my land. And as my daddy said, I consulted with him, I consulted with my sister, who's a radiation therapist. She's actually a docentess. And she uses gas stations every day to make sure, because my wife has had cancer. I mean, I ain't getting rich off this place, no, but if people want to cause cancer, it ain't no goddamn, it ain't no way. No matter my, with pretty no mother. And I don't mean no causing no ill effects, because I love all my neighbors, we all get along. I hope this don't change nothing. You know, I tried to look at these things and make the best decision before I thought ahead. It's coming somewhere. For some reason, the good Lord blessed him to call me, I don't know why, but it did. But, uh, I hope maybe Mr. Barker can clarify some of his concerns and, uh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I need my name.
One, one second, anyone else on the list?
No, no, sir, that's the end of the list.
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Can you state your name and address on the record, please?
Connie Carter, two fifty-three Mize Road. I'm right across from Bobby Carter. And plus, I'm hard on the hundred acres that surrounds their property. And I have no objection to the cell tower, but I do agree, Pam, are they going to be, you know, too intense to make sure everything is still fine with that cell tower going forward? That's my own concern. I'm thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. All right, uh, if we could, uh, I'd like to address Mr. Barker. Mr. Barker, have you heard, uh, many of the comments made during the public hearing? Were you able to hear all that?
Yes, absolutely, I heard all of it and if I'm, I would like to address a few of them.
Yes, sir, please do. Is anybody you can, uh, speak up or raise up your volume, please?
Uh, I can talk louder. That works for you.
Yes, sir.
So the, uh, the, uh, the home at four seventy-seven Mize Road, um, that we're very concerned about this tower being within a quarter mile of them, that home is point five six miles from the, the tower location. So it, it, it is definitely over a quarter of a mile, it's actually over a half a mile. The right same with the property, five twenty-two Mize Road, it's point six miles away from the tower structure and actually has a great tree buffer immediately behind their home. I, I don't believe they would even see the tower at all from their house. Um, I also want to say, I, I had multiple property owners interested in, in leasing property for this tower structure. Um, one of the property owners was Deborah Carter. And the location on her property that was agreed to, um, was two hundred and fifty feet from both of those properties. So it, it was in the corner, immediately behind five twenty-two Mize Road. Um, and, and in my opinion, was just not a good location for the tower. So we moved it away from that location and moved it out, um, up to Mr. Carter's property. Um, so, so originally this tower location was, was, uh, within about four or five hundred feet of, of both those residents. Environmental impacts, uh, I have to have, and it's in process now, a full, um, environmental study done by a third-party environmental company submitted to and approved by the FCC. Uh, a full NEPA investigation, uh, soils investigation, uh, environmental impact studies, everything with every type of wildlife and endangered species, um, archaeology. They will do a dig and make sure that I'm not affecting any archaeological resource, resources. Uh, State Historic Preservation Office has to sign off and state that I'm not in, affecting any historic preservation or historic properties. All of that has to be done before I can build this. So environmentally, um, it, this has to go through ten times more, um, of a process than if I wanted to build a home out there. Um, I could build a home without going through any of that and displace wildlife and mess up archaeology and everything. The, uh, the health concerns, it, it's hard for me to address the health concerns. I'm really not supposed to. The National Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, uh, says that the federal government has to govern what the, the frequencies and power outputs on every wireless structure. And, and we have to abide by those, that they provide the license to the Verizon's and AT&amp;Ts and those folks to, uh, to operate and, and they have to comply with those regulations. Um, and, and they, they, they further state that boards cannot take into consideration health concerns because the federal government, uh, has mandated that there aren't any. They've done their studies and shown that there aren't any. So it's a little tough for me to get into the health concerns aspect of it, um, uh, just because of the, the, the federal side. I will tell you that Emory University is one of the leading, uh, medical universities here in, in Atlanta. Uh, they have installations on most of their buildings inside their campus. Their classroom buildings, their dorm buildings, they all have, uh, installation, cellular installations on the rooftops. This is the same exact installations that would be on, uh, a tower. Uh, and further, I have put towers and continue to put towers on school properties all over the country. Um, schools love to get that revenue coming in and, and have, there, there's no evidence of any health concerns. So we, we do actually build these on, on school properties all over the place. I, I hope it addresses some of the concerns, um, and, and, you know, if, if the board has any, any, any questions of me, I'd, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Mr. Barker, and they said that FCC regulates the frequencies. Um, do you have any documentation you could provide to the board as it relates to that? I think you mentioned the, uh, the Telecommunications Act.
Yes, well, the, the Telecommunications Act of, of ninety-six, um, governs all of that and let me see. Um, I have, um, uh, uh, we, we sometimes have jurisdictions that require a third-party study to be done to, uh, to, to basically show that their, uh, Verizon's operating within the, uh, the frequencies that they're required to and that they're not interfering with anything or causing any, uh, any, anything that they shouldn't be. Um, and I have a couple of those that I can forward over, uh, to Matthew, um, that, that just basically show the, uh, effective radiation is below any type of, uh, standards that are, are required.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barker, and would it be okay to share that with the citizens?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you mentioned the full environmental study, uh, Mr. Barker, by multiple agencies. Would that be submitted to, uh, the county planner as well?
Oh, sure, sure, there's nothing, it's ma, it's a matter of public record once we submit it to the FCC as well. Um, so absolutely, I'll send that to, to Mr. Huglen. Um, as soon as it comes in, it usually takes around sixty to seventy-five days and that's always my, uh, my last item that comes in. But I will absolutely send it over and it's, uh, being done by a third, a, you know, third-party group. It's not something that we are allowed to do ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Barker, okay. Says to end of public comments for the public hearing, uh, are there any questions from just the board members to Mr. Barker? Uh, so Matthew Huglen, Mr. Huglen, the county planner here, uh, if you could just give us, um, your analysis of the application, how it relates to the rules and regulations, if you could just briefly.
Yes, sir, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I do want to say for the record, uh, in order to satisfy the requirements of our local ordinance, letters were mailed out to all adjoining and adjacent, uh, property owners. Ms. Carter, I have to look, your letter bounced back.
I don't really.
We didn't get one.
I got a, I got a, I got a.
Or did he go to Debbie who Pam and Bill just called?
I believe it was five, was it five twenty-two?
That's us.
That would be Pam.
We did not.
Name of that property, I'm at two fifty-three.
Okay, I may have the numbers.
It's all of us that own that property.
I see. The, a public hearing ad ran twice in the Council Messenger, July fourteenth and twenty-first, and then two signs were posted on the site on July fifteenth. Uh, we received this application on June twenty-third, which is more than thirty days prior, uh, to this planning board meeting as the ordinance requires. As, uh, Mr. Barker mentioned, the proposed tower is two hundred and fifty feet tall with a ten-foot, um, lightning rod is, is also required by the ordinance. The tower will need blinking lights in order to comply with Federal Aviation Administration, uh, requirements. And the proposed setbacks for the site are also exactly two hundred and fifty feet, which is a hundred percent of the tower height, also as the ordinance requires. And then with regards to landscaping and buffering, um, the diagram that you have depicts the, um, the trees and shrubs, which I'm not sure if I can pronounce the rapiophile shrubs, wax myrtle trees, and then it will be enclosed by a dog-eared, uh, wooden fence as well. So in my, in my estimation, all of the ordinance requirements.
And it looks like the landscape above or the trees are ten feet in width or depth away from the chain link fence.
That's correct, yeah, and staggered formation out to about, uh, looks like ten feet out.
And can you give us an idea about the, uh, topography or the existing conditions around the site?
Yeah, I'm not intimately familiar with the property, I just viewed it from the road, but, um, it's obviously a rural setting. It looks as though right now the property where the tower is going to go is in pines that seem to be five or six years old. And would be enclosed in that pine field if, if that's correct. And so, uh, yeah, just based on the geography and landscape, nothing out of the ordinary. So the landscaping, the application package would be what I assume in addition to the natural buffer of the planted pines that are already on the property.
And, and Mr. Huglen, as we've heard public comments during the public hearing, you have an opinion or suggestion about possible, uh, testing of the, uh, radiation, of the radiation frequencies around the tower site?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And I was actually looking at state law that governs how counties and municipalities can regulate cell towers. When it comes to safety, there's really no mention of any type of, uh, biological or physiological safety with regards to radio, radioactive waves or how they may affect, uh, medical devices or anything of that nature. The state law and our local ordinance, when they refer to safety, they really refer to fall zones, setbacks, uh, issues where a county can control how a tower may be compromised and fall on a house or a fence or a property line or a road, something of that nature. Uh, you know, required fencing, so for example, uh, a child doesn't wander in and inadvertently get electrocuted. Those types of safety mechanisms, uh, from what I've read, are in purview of the county to control. When it comes to any kind of medical diagnosis, that's just simply not mentioned on the state level or the county level at all.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, Mr. Barker mentioned the nineteen ninety-six tele, telecommunications act. What, what are your thoughts on, uh, how that affects the local, uh, decision-making bodies, decision on this? You know, we've had several of these come up in the last few years. And I remember there being some type of discussion evidence that really, um, as long as the applicant meets all the local guidelines, that really takes it out of our hands. Is that a fair?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding, uh, that I, I admit I'm not very familiar with the federal telecommunications act. I do know that it does not allow for, um, jurisdictions to provide preferential treatment. So for example, we couldn't set a very low invited fee for an internet provider as opposed to a cell tower provider. We can't preference one type over the other. Uh, I know that that's a feature of it, other than that, I don't know anything about the federal communications act.
Because we certainly, uh, want to take into consideration and protect the public safety and welfare of our citizens, sir. Just trying to get to the heart of, heart of the matter. Any other questions?
Let me ask Mr. Barker. Mr. Barker, um, do different sized towers put off different amounts of radio frequency radiation? Or all of them the same, you're saying a tower's five hundred foot compared to a tower that's three hundred foot?
Uh, they don't, they, they all use the same frequency, um, frequencies. So it's, it's actually the same, uh, radio frequency waves that are coming off of, of the, the site. Um, they, they do fluctuate the power, but it's not based on the height. Uh, they, they stay well below any FCC mandated, uh, power requirements. It's really just based on, um, what they're trying to cover. So if they're only trying to cover a small area, it's just lower power because if they have more power to it, then it's going to cover a larger area than they want to cover and, and cause interference. Um, so it's just really the, the amount of area they want to cover that makes them fluctuate that, that power level. Um, it really has nothing to do with the height. They could be at, uh, at twenty-five feet and still use the same amount of power that they would use on this two hundred and fifty-foot tower and they would be well within the FCC guideline.
Thank you.
And, and I did send over the, uh, electromagnetic exposure analysis. Matthew, that was done by a, a, a third-party company, um, that, that performs these studies just showing, um, that the FCC, everything's within the FCC guideline for human exposure limit, um, with the, with the tower.
Uh, thank you, uh, fellow board members, any other questions for Mr. Barker or Mr. Huglen? Uh, here in nine, uh, then I'll entertain a motion, go ahead and close the public hearing. So Mr. Gears, have a second.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel, all those in favor? All those, those last time. So the public hearing is, uh, is now closed. We've heard, uh, evidence from Mr. Barker, the applicant for Burghill Ridge for the, uh, cell tower site in High Towers of the Mize Road property of Mr. Carter, Mr. Bobby Carter. We've heard, uh, public comments for, um, the landowner, the adjoining landowners and the neighbors in the area. And we've heard about concerns about, uh, public safety and welfare, general health, citizens in the county. Heard Mr. Huglen, our county planner, as far as his administrative overview of the application. So, is there any further discussion? And what is the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, Tony Foster, I make a motion that we approve of the, the tower on till six.
Second, Mr. Gears. Is there any discussion? I will say this, uh, I think some valid points were brought up during the, uh, public comments. I would like to see some evidence and documentation that this particular site will not cause any, uh, negative impact to the, uh, the health of, of the neighbors. So I think that evidence, uh, those, those studies will be made available, so I'd like to see that.
Yes, sir, and I've received the email, I'll be happy, it's a, it's a pretty lengthy document, but I'll be happy to bring it up on the screen, uh, or I can forward it to plenty more members after the meeting or whatever, whatever you may like.
Uh, you can forward it to us, Mr. Huglen.
What are you referring to?
Uh, so this is a electromagnetic exposure analysis for Clement School Road in Wilson, North Carolina. This is a document from March of two thousand and twenty. It looks like an, an engineering analysis of the, uh, safety, uh, radio frequency waves for another cell tower built in, uh, North Carolina.
Can we get it? Is there, is there a summary of that? Could you put that up?
Yes, sir, if you give me just a moment, I just want to make sure I'm.
Let me post it somewhere where, uh, interested parties could actually pull it up at home and look at it.
Certainly. Okay, so this is the, uh, we can, we can move the screen too to make sure everybody can see. Does that look okay there, everybody can see? So this is a, a DBM engineering out of Fairview Village, Pennsylvania. And again, as I mentioned with the subject line there, you see electromagnetic exposure analysis stokes to Clement School Road in Wilson, North Carolina. And so here, pretty close to the top of the document, summary of findings, the maximum exposure of radio frequency emissions from the. from the proposed Verizon Wireless facility will be far below FCC exposure. Using upper limit assumption for the Verizon Wireless equipment configuration, accumulated radio frequency exposure levels will be less than 0.32% of both the applicable FCC safety standards and the applicable safety standard prescribed by the American National Standards Institute for non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation at all locations of access. The following chart specifies, specifically illustrates the anticipated exposure levels in areas surrounding the facility." Here's the applicability for the National Telecommunications Act of 1966. This act states that, quote, "No state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate placement, construction, or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with FCC regulations concerning such emissions. As indicated above, this proposed facility will be in full compliance with FCC emission standards as such beyond regulation in that regard." And so, given that information, I guess you may just ask Mr. Barker how the proposed tower compares to this, the analysis of this tower that he obviously shepherded through last year.
Absolutely. It, it's exactly the same. There's a little bit of a height difference. No, this was, I believe this was a 250-foot tower also. But, but it's exactly the same. They're, they're, they use the same configuration, same frequencies, and very similar outputs, you know, of, of power in all of the rural areas across North Carolina. And, and I can have one of these done for this, I will actually. I'll have one of these done for this particular specific site and, and send that over to you all as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion before us. Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Harris to approve the application. Is there any further discussion? Here in none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor. Let me know when I say aye. All those opposed, like, those who care. But, Mr. Hoagland, if you would, please make sure that's available to the public to debate and review it. You've been a chance to give it.
Yes, sir, if you, I'll put it on the county website. If you go to caswellcountync.gov and just find the planning tab, I'll have it up at the end of the week.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. All right, next on the agenda, the Southeast Caswell zoning plan. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Loestrecker has actually prepared a brief presentation on this issue as well and has requested to present. Give me a moment, let me pull that up and then get the TV back in the right place as well.
Just put this back straight like you had it.
Yes, sir.
I'm on the top, is everyone able to see? Chair recognizes Commissioner Loestrecker.
Thank you. I'm old school, so I'm used to standing up right next to the screen. If you all don't mind, I'm going to just do that.
Pardon me?
You do, you.
All right, just thought I'd put together an overview for the Southeast Caswell Conditional District zoning ordinance. And it's abbreviated later as CDZ. Probably ought to add the word protection right following zoning. But this is the area in green that would be part, that's part of the geography, it is the geography of the zoning area. There are two, and, and we'll go into it in more detail. But just while I've got the map, there are two areas zoned for light industry. One is pretty much where the Royal Park building is, was on 86. And then the other is where the Dollar General, Family Dollar, and those facilities are located in the Anderson area. I thought I'd put together, with some help, a timeline of, of how we got to here. And starting in mid-2019, we had many citizens, literally hundreds, in the Southeast Caswell, started community meetings and starting asking the commissioners for district zoning. In December of 2019, a non-binding zoning referendum was put on the ballot. In the following January, the one-year moratorium on polluting industry development took effect. In April of 2020, a large group of residents came and asked the Caswell County Board of Commissioners, thereafter abbreviated as CCBOC, to implement zoning for the southeast quadrant. In November of 2020, the ballot was obviously counted, and the results of the non-binding referendum are here. You can see by voting precincts, the results of the voting, the yes votes are in green, the percentages are in green, and the no in red. And overall, if you add up the whole county, the motion, the non-binding referendum, which reads, "Should the Caswell County Board of Commissioners adopt a county-wide zoning ordinance to implement zoning regulations for all unincorporated areas of Caswell County?" And you can see that it failed 52 to 48%, roughly. However, if you look at it by the precincts, you see a completely different picture. The southeast quadrant of the county voted 54 to 46% in favor of countywide zoning. I'll take a little editorial trip here and say I don't believe it's too big of an intellectual leap to, to make that if, if countywide zoning was okay, conditional district zoning would be okay with that same percentage of the people. So continuing with the timeline, you're good. The moratorium on polluting industries in Caswell, in Southeast Caswell, Southeast Caswell County was extended for six months. And this passed the Caswell County Board of County Commissioners seven to zero, including planning for conditional district zoning. In January through June, we had lots of turmoil, lots of fun. Motion, the planning was turned on and off. But in June of 2021, I made the motion for conditional zoning protection for the southeast quadrant. Process to proceed with a proposed plan. This passed the Board, Board of Three. The plan, which we'll go over in a minute, as amended, is sent to the planning board for consistency with land use, with the land use plan, and for the board's recommendation. Public hearing will be scheduled subsequent to the planning board's action. And then the Board of Commissioners will vote after the public hearing, and if approved, subsequent transformation of the motion or of the plan will be put into the UDO format. So here's a summary of the key aspects, facets, points, whatever you want to call them, of the zoning ordinance. The, we already saw that the southeast quadrant is defined in the map. Go back if you have any questions. Two zoning districts only, residential, agricultural, and light industrial. Residential agricultural is like 99.7% of the land that's covered by this. As pursuant to North Carolina statutes for zoning, regulation of agricultural is, agriculture is exempt from zoning regulations and has been since 1996. Current land use in compliance with existing UDO and North Carolina laws, in other words, you, we're not grandfathering in illegal land use, is unaffected. In other words, hunting, land use, home color, design, et cetera, are not impacted by the Southeast Caswell Conditional District Zoning Protection. There was an ad and a lot of discussion put on that said, "With zoning, you couldn't cut down a tree, you couldn't hunt on your own land." Total BS. Anyway, the Caswell County has had experience with zoning for over 50 years without any issues. The HICO zoning district, which is the northeast quadrant, Yanceville and Milton are all zoned areas already. Another summary, or key point is, "Landowners may sell their property to whomever they wish." "Conditional zoning protection allows for land uses currently unforeseen." "Property owners may use their land in accordance with the permitted use table," which we'll see in just a second. But I'll point out to you on that table that compared to the HICO zoning area, there are more permitted uses than this HICO Lake District has. And there are permitted uses versus special or permitted uses with supplemental regulation than the current HICO Lake District. So here's the, here's the table, and it's multi-slides because it's a long table. But here are the codes. The HICO Lake, which is this column, and it has areas that are resort, residential, RB, resort business, industrial park. The southeast Caswell has residential, agricultural, and light industrial. The permitted use codes are abbreviated with permitted use, permitted with supplemental regulations, special use, special use with supplemental regulations, not allowed or not permitted. And so, if you want to compare, you can compare the HICO zoning districts to the new proposed southeast Caswell districts. And you can see there's a great deal of similarities, but all of the southeast quadrants are permitted. Most of the HICO require further regulations and special uses. So there's nothing of tremendous impact here. Trying to address Mr. Lannan's, Lannan's comments, but I don't think it's on this page.
Actually, that's a great point, yeah. So the HICO Lake zoning area does allow for what are classified as customary home occupations. Yeah, right there. So a customary home occupation would be if you did run a business out of your house. The HICO Lake zoning area in your house, it allows you to use, I believe, up to 50%, 50% of the square foot. So just simple math, if you had a 2,000-square-foot house and you wanted to get all the house, that would be the floor space to your business, and that would be already allowed with the HICO Lake zoning.
And that's permitted, permitted, without any further following. All right? So going down the list, the, the one really important thing to note here is that uses high-impact industries classified, and network classified needs to be added to that table, if you haven't already, as Class III and Class IV in the HIDO, the High Impact Development Ordinance, Section 14D68, regulated land uses an exception. These are not permitted, not allowed in, in the quadrant at all. And here are those industries, if you will. Asphalt plants, chemical manufacturing, explosives manufacturing, medical waste incinerators, paper mills, and Class IV, which are the super-high-impact ones. Can I twist this a little?
Sure.
Is that, all right? Mining and quaring, resource extraction, cement manufacturing, coal ash storage, or our good friend, nuclear waste storage. Those are not permitted. The other one, industrial research, light industrial uses not otherwise listed, require special use permits in the HICO or permitted in the light industrial area. And Mr. Hoagland will go over how it takes to go ahead and get those in areas that are not already zoned as light industrial.
Next slide.
Yes. And this, just to wrap it up, repair shops permitted in light industry. The home businesses are permitted in the residential agricultural area. Okay? And just to wrap it up. Okay? So here's kind of the key aspect of why you call it conditional zoning. Is property owners, property owners may apply for rezoning to a conditional zoning district by submitting an application to the county planning department, hold a community meeting, outlining the proposed land use rezoning, and obtain approval from the county board of commissioners. So I threw together a few frequently asked questions. What new restrictions does conditional district zoning protection have, CDZ, on what I do on my property? The answer is virtually none. Agricultural and residential uses and activities are not impacted. What will be the impact on property values? This type of zoning protection should make land more desirable to incoming residents, developers, and industries, since they will know they will not have polluting industries sited next to their property. How should, how could CDZ impact economic development? Basically, it's the same answer here. Only polluting industries are prohibited, which generally negatively impact property values and desirability. How many other counties in North Carolina use zoning? Most counties, 83 of 100, 83% have chosen to adopt comprehensive or partial zoning ordinances, including Caswell County, with the three areas I already mentioned. What is conditional use zoning? Conditional use zoning allows for a property owner to apply for a use different than allowed in the zone from that table of permitted uses. If the use is included elsewhere in the district, the county commissioners can allow that property use subject to conditions that it decides. Can zoning dictate what my house must look like? No, state laws are very clear on this. A zoning ordinance cannot regulate architectural standards or design criteria for residential properties, single-family homes, duplexes, et cetera. And those are just the questions I put together. And here's the table of contents for the ordinance that Matthew has copies of. And thank you very much for your attention.
So we're new to the area, only been here a couple of months. So what you just, I, I see a lot of signs in people's yards going to and from the house, say no to asphalt plants. That, that's basically saying it's a no-go?
No. I wish it did. The, there's, the quarry has an asphalt and a cement and a quarry that's located, or proposal, they've leased the land. Is it all right for me to?
Sure.
They've already leased the land for that. They applied for permits from the state. Their first application was rejected because they exceeded by 200 and 400% sulfur oxide and nitrogen oxide emissions. They appealed, then withdrew their appeal, then submitted another permit application that's still being evaluated. They haven't opened it up for public review yet. They have also, and then the residents in the area objected to their watershed application that was for review by this board. And the, the quarry company's response to that was to... And the quarry company's response to that was to sue fifty-two of them. For. For, for impeding their progress, I guess. And basically, it, it all involves, and I'm sorry for the long answer, but it all involves vested rights. Because they, the quarry company is claiming they have vested rights due to the amount of money they've invested in. This process so far and therefore are at, at the time, there was no zoning, so they would be exempt from any zoning. That followed subsequently. The. There's a group that is countering that and saying, no, they don't have vested rights. Whoever prevails there. If, if the vested rights are awarded to the quarry. Then this zoning has no impact on them. The HIDO. Actually has no impact on them either. Unfortunately. But if the vested rights side prevails that says they don't have it, then this would apply. Sorry for the long answer. But do you agree with that now?
I actually understood what you said, so that's great.
You're a minority.
How many more quadrants are proposed in county by the county commissioners going forward? Are they planning on proposing anymore? So this is it? When it gets proposed, this won't be no more quadrants in the county?
Well. Can you predict the future?
Well, I'm just asking a question.
There, there are no plans at this point.
So. Just the particular areas? And everybody has a right to revisit those areas, right? If they have, if they something they want to put in there, they can come before the board or, or the county commissioners.
You're, you're talking other, other.
Anything that's been zoned within that map.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's the, that's the conditional part of conditional district zone. So that if somebody says, hey, I want to put in a.
I did pick something. I put a whole presentation together.
Well, how about we wait for Matthew?
If we already had the HIDO effect, what's the point having zone?
Because the HIDO only regulates setbacks. It doesn't, it doesn't define land use at all.
Well.
There's no provisions.
The HIDO is tightened down so much, barely any industry is going to want to come.
The. If a quarry wants to come. And if they buy a thousand acres. The, the HIDO will not impact their, their work at all. If, if an asphalt plant wants to put something in and they have. I think it's little as twenty-five acres.
For an asphalt plant?
Yeah.
I think it has to be fifty.
They can put one in. The zoning says in the southeast quadrant. That quarries and asphalt plants cannot be going into the southeast quadrant, period.
So Steve, one, just one question on this, this may help, but I'm trying to get clarification as well. So in your presentation, class three and four are prohibited. Class one and two, which are specified in the HIDO. Those would be allowed. In southeast. For example, I'll just pick one, right? A solar field is a solar farm, I think of a class one. It has some relatively small setbacks associated with it. Got to be on ten acres or something like that, right? So. Those. If, if something is currently zoned as residential agricultural. And someone wanted to use their land for solar. They could do that, they would just have to get the zone, conditional zoning change. And then as long as that process played out.
And meets the HIDO setbacks.
Right. You then still have the setbacks divided in the HIDO, but you could do that, but that would be the process.
So in other words, the HIDO. Does not define the land use. The HIDO defines setbacks for that, like use of land.
Mr. Hogan, do we know how? I don't have the HIDO in front of me. Do you recall the setbacks? I know there are setbacks from the property lines. Setbacks from. Yeah, they vary based on the intensity of the use. So there are four classes of development in the HIDO. And classes. One were minimal, two were a little more, three were a little more, and four were the, the most restrictive. And they, and I believe that it's a two-factor measurement for all of them. So there's a, there's a.
Probably space, you have the, you have your setbacks within the property that says you have to be so far from. Your property line, then. There's also another setback from the property line to protect it still. For example, a neighbor's house or a church or whatever it might be.
So I remember, man, we were looking at the maps when we were reviewing that. Was it twelve-hundred and eighteen-hundred? Or maybe even as much as two thousand feet? What was the ultimate decision?
There was nothing more than.
I think it's two thousand max. I think it's like a class four.
I remember looking at the maps and we were, this must have been some time last year. Doing the measuring tools and trying to figure out forms that could fall back. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Hogan, do you want, do you want to add anything? Yes, sir. I've got, I prepared, I began preparing a presentation. Before I knew Commissioner Ostraker was preparing his. And so mine focuses primarily on. So my presentation primarily focuses on how a conditional rezoning would work, because that's really the meat of the new ordinance. With, most of the slides are just a hypothetical example of something that exists in the land use table and how a conditional rezoning would work for that type of development. So just a brief overview, a lot of this Commissioner Ostraker already covered, but I'm just going to touch on. Just a preview of the draft, of the ordinance draft. The zoning maps, which you've already looked at as well. The table of uses, which you looked at as well. Like I said, the most of what I'm going to cover today. Focuses on the additional rezoning process. I've just got a hypothetical scenario there. And then at the end, I'm happy to answer any questions. So Commissioner Ostraker touched on this. This is where it would exist. The, the draft ordinance that you have before you today. It would exist in the existing Article Five. Section of the UDO. We would put it there because Article Five already deals with Heiko Lake zoning. And as it is drafted now, it just goes right on to the end of that. It does create the new zoning districts, as Commissioner Ostraker mentioned, residential agricultural and light industrial. And then it establishes the conditional rezoning process, which I'll get into in more detail. Through the means of conditional overlays. So this is the map again, which you saw earlier. As Commissioner Ostraker mentioned, the vast, vast majority shaded in green is residential and agricultural, which is exactly as it sounds. The vast majority of the land use there is already, you know, large open farmland, wooded areas, single-family residences. And so this really just seeks to keep that in place. And then a few small portions that are zoned as light industrial. Specifically, they are in the Prospect Hill area. This is the Royal Park facility shaded there in the light blue. And in the Anderson area, this is what is referred to as the Three Points Community. And then the rectangle there at the top. Is actually what is now a Family Dollar Dollar Tree store. Even though the satellite picture there is a little bit outdated. So the table of uses again is Commissioner Ostraker mentioned earlier. So this will just be added on to what's existing with Heiko Lake. The Heiko Lake code would be unchanged. This adds the southeast Caswell district, again, the residential agricultural and the light industrial. And again, the table of uses would stay in as a part of Article Five of the UDO. So this is really the meat of my presentation today. I want to kind of walk you through what a hypothetical. Conditional rezoning would look like, what the process would look like, how the property owners and developers would approach it. And exactly what they could expect out of the process. So this portion of the map, this is on South Highway eighty-six. And the property that I have outlined there is mostly open space. I think there's a natural gas tank that's on the property currently. And right above it there is the Royal Park facility. That's the property in question. So our hypothetical scenario here is the property owners on this parcel of land want to develop a construction yard. Or basically a construction company with storage of construction materials, trucks, timber. Tools, things of that nature under the classification of a construction yard. What you see though, in the table is a construction yard, which is circled in red, is only permitted in light industrial. So that's the challenge that they would have, is a construction yard is not allowed in residential agricultural. So their solution would be, as Commissioner Ostraker mentioned, is to apply for a conditional rezon. And this is how that process would work. So the very first step that they would take is they would submit an application to the planning department. This would include all the vital information like the proposed use, a site plan. Any of the documentation, property engineering studies, whatever it may be, part of the application. And this is vital to the process as well. The next step that they'll take is they'll have a community meeting. So this is separate from a county hosted public hearing where the developer has to go out into the community and gather input on their proposed development. After the community meeting. They then have to make a summary report of the sentiment at the community meeting. Maybe everybody comes to the community meeting and they say, hey, fantastic, we love a construction yard. You guys sound great, go for it. Or the community members say, you know, not in my backyard, I don't want that there. Whatever the result is of the community meeting, they've got to package that up in a report and they've got to submit that as part of their application plan. The next step would be that the plan comes before the planning board. And this is similar to zoning procedures already in the Heiko Lake area. And really what we're doing today, the planning board has an opportunity to review. And they may rate, make recommendations for changes on the plan. So this is back at the property we were looking at a second ago. This shows you what the zoning would be. With the blue and light industrial and the green as residential agricultural. And this is the, these are the features that, that they would find it. So it's zoned residential agricultural. It's mostly vacant. It sits next to a light industrial district. And obviously being right there on eighty-six, it sits along a major travel corridor. This is the same property, but I just, I just rotated it forty-five degrees. So you can see the development from the highway perspective. Because the roadway there comes into play. So this would be, and under our hypothetical scenario, this is what the developer or the property owner submits as part of their application. They say, okay, what we're proposing is we want to rezone the property from residential agriculture to light industrial, which allows for construction yards. We're going to have our parking and our driveway come right in off eighty-six. We're going to have a storage area, but it's going to be fenced in. So our tools and our lumber and our trucks and everything that's going to be fenced in over there. And the sign for our business is going to be right off of Highway eighty-six. So in our hypothetical scenario, the planning board picks this up. And they say, you know, that's a pretty good plan, but based on our comprehensive plan, based on the feedback in your community. Meeting, these are the recommendations that the planning board would make. And the planning board is going to recommend that the parking and driveway come in off of the secondary road. To minimize traffic off eighty-six. They're going to recommend a tree buffer as a visual buffer, because maybe the community feedback is, you know, we don't mind a construction yard. But we don't want to see all the lumber and tools and everything over there. And if you're driving up and down, that's a mostly rural area. Why don't we have some trees so we keep it rural as a visual? Buffer. That's going to be part of their recommendations. And then they might also recommend that the sign move over to the corner. And really kind of match the look and feel of the sign that exists, already exists for the Royal Park facility next door. So those recommended changes, if it's all agreed upon. The final step in this whole process is they go to the county commission. The county commission hosts a public hearing, which is the second opportunity in this process for public input. And if all the property owners, developers and commissioners can agree upon all of those conditions. Then the application will be approved and the property will be rezoned. If they cannot agree upon the conditions, then the application will be denied. Some key parts in the process, I think it's very important to note and to remember. And Commissioner Ostraker touched on a couple of these. Bonafide farms are exempt from zoning per North Carolina General Statute one sixty D dash nine oh three. And I think that exemption has actually existed since nineteen fifty-six, not nineteen sixty-six. Just to clarify. The, any conditional rezoning process must have the consent of all applicable property owners. Per North Carolina General Statute one sixty D dash seven oh two. That is a protection that guarantees a developer cannot come in and submit an application to rezon your property without your consent.
So one person can stop. Some say one person.
Hypothetically, yes, sir. I believe that's the case. And actually, I was talking with Amy about this earlier. Based on my reading of that, let's say that four siblings own a property. And one of the siblings doesn't want to go through with it, then they do in their capacity as a property owner have, have the ability to stop the process, the development process.
I think the word applicable might be a little misleading there. I don't think it's necessary.
That is, I'm, I can go back and look at the state statute, but I try to just verbatim copy the state statute.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it. What's an applicable property owner? It's a property owner, right?
And. One feature too, this is really a documentation and record-keeping. Type of a feature, but this draft we have before you today guarantees that a final as-built site plan. With the approved conditions noted. On the site plan must be reported with the register of deeds within thirty days of receiving certificate of occupancy. So what that means in real terms is, let's say the construction yard gets approved. And they, after they go through rezoning, they get their building permits, they get a certificate of occupancy. They then have to submit a final site plan with a note on the face saying. Condition A was the sign. Condition B was the trees. Condition C was the, the driveway. And maybe even reference the minutes of the meetings in which those conditions were added. And that has to be recorded with the register of deeds. So that way in the future, anybody looking back at the property. There'd be a, there'd be a concise documentation record that tells you exactly the conditions that apply to that specific property. So again, that's everything we covered here. On my presentation with a focus on the rezoning scenario, and I'm happy to. Maybe get a bottle of water and then answer any questions that you might have.
Maybe it's a good time to take a time and at least.
So meaning Minnesota's.
Okay, we're now resuming the planning board meeting. Mr. Hovland, does he have anything else to add to your presentation?
No, sir. I'm happy to take any questions. I know that, that may be kind of the, that may be the first example of a conditional rezoning that more members have seen. I'm happy to go back over it or answer any questions you have about it or any questions about the draft in general.
Thank you, Mr. Hovland. If you could go back to the first one of the slides at the beginning of the map, the entire map.
Yeah.
And I'll just make a few observations. Everybody else feel free to step in. I mean, we all come from different parts of the county. We're all here to do what's best for the county. We're going to have different things, but that's what makes it great. My first observation, looking at the voting precinct results, I noticed that the Yanceville precinct voted in favor of zoning, but it was left out. Just want to make that observation. Not sure why, but it was left out of the southeast zoning proposal. And when I looked at the voting results also, the Milton voting precinct voted against zoning, if I'm not mistaken. And comparing the voting map to the zoning map, it looks like there's a portion of the Highco Lake zoning area is in the Milton district. So hypothetically, let's just say the folks in the Milton district wanted to remove that part of the zone from that area. If they wanted to, they may not. Is, are there any laws through the general statutes that you're aware of and procedures that would make that happen?
I'm really not. Referendums of that type, from what I understand, are all non-binding.
Right.
Commissioner Ostracher alluded to this in his, his presentation. And so it's really an either or. It's really, you know, if the public, in a hypothetical scenario, let's say that ninety-nine percent voted in favor of zoning and one percent against, it doesn't bind the hand, the commissioner's hands to enact any kind of zoning, whether it's repeal HEICO or add new or any other type of configuration and vice versa. There's, it's just non-binding in any capacity. So I'm not aware of any, anything in state law that allows citizens to, you know, drive an initiative like that. The responsibility of zoning is ultimately to the county commissioners or the town council on the, on their local level, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Hovland. And also wanted to thank you for putting the presentation, Commissioner Ostracher as well, for putting together a presentation very, very good. More observations, Matt.
Yes, sir.
And I think Commissioner Ostracher touched on it, but I was a little puzzled as to why there was no highway business or commercial zoning area, but it seems like light industrial covers.
That was the intention.
So just looking at the map, what would you say, Matt? There's maybe thousands of parcels? I guess we don't know the, the number, but.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Lots of parcels.
In excess of a thousand taxpayers.
So just looking, taking a surface level view, so I'm, I look at the intersection of Highway one nineteen, Highway eighty-six where Walker's Grocery gas station is located. I think there's some storage units out there, man. I'm wondering, you know, this parcel along with other existing businesses in this area, is it a way we can inventory all the existing businesses, commercial areas, and get input from those property owners and taxpayers, how they would like to see their property zoned? Because if I were in their situation, Walker's, this is taken, for instance, Walker's gas station has been there for decades. I own that. I think I would like to see that zoned, light industrial, commercial. That, that would be mine. That would be my first upstairs. And I think looking across the map, you're going to run into a lot of those same issues. So I think that's at least something we should look into and at least give citizens an opportunity to give their input. They may not care, but I think we need to afford them that option.
Chairman, just on that topic, because I had some similar thoughts, just on the map itself. So if we look at the detailed maps of the areas and some very, very few areas that are listed as light industrial. If the commissioners are going to pass conditions zoning, to me, it seems like there should be consistency here in terms of existing businesses would be included in the list of light industrial areas with the area of existing businesses, if they fall into this criteria. And I'm not sure about the grandfather and all that, but I don't, it doesn't seem consistent to me that Dollar General, for example, which was not on this list, and Anderson, they just built it a few months ago.
Right.
Okay, well, why is that not included in payment dollar years? And Piedmont Electric is right up the road. Why remain included, right? So I think there needs to be consistency regardless of what's going on here in the existing businesses that fall into this light industrial should be classified as such.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hovland, and then you mentioned grandfather and vested rights. You know, right now, of course, Walker's continues gas station. Let's say God forbid there's a fire. It gets destroyed after they build, property changes hands, or it's vacant for a few months. Will their vested rights come into jeopardy? If it is, do they have to be applied for a conditional zoning permit? Have a public hearing, come back, or it just seems like that would be hardship. Are the conditional use permit, are those hearings advertised?
So, yes, I'm really glad you brought that up because there's a bit of confusion in terminology. And one sixty D actually clarifies that terminology. So what are today's special use permits used to be called conditional use permits? But conditional rezoning has become so common that conditional rezoning is one thing and special use permits are separate.
And forgive me.
So we're not talking about the same thing.
I have trouble figuring out that there's, it's not additional rezoning or rezoning.
Hey, if I wasn't an artist who was forced to study this every day, then I probably wouldn't know this difference either. So, but I think it's an excellent question too. And I think one thing that's worth noting as well is short of a conditional rezoning process, there could just simply be a map rezoning process as well. So if in the future, let's say that this zoning plan goes into place and the vast majority is residential agricultural, and then you find a Walker store or a Dollar General that really should be zoned as light industrial, the county could go through the process of simply rezoning that to light industrial without placing conditions on property. So you don't, you don't necessarily have to go through the conditional rezoning process. It's really, it's really engineered for new developments that are going from one category to another.
Thank you, Mr. Hovland. And then I think economic development, I even mentioned. You know, this could, you know, Mr. Hovland, could this be a tool to promote economic development? We see certain areas on the Highway eighty-six corridor at certain intersections that we think have commercial potential.
Yeah, I, I hate to get outside of my boundary and kind of speak on an economic development question. I would definitely have the county manager or economic developer weigh in on that. I'll tell you from a, from an administrative standpoint that I get a lot of calls, I get a lot of calls from folks that are involved in just residential real estate if they inquire about zoning. And then beyond that, I get calls from folks that are interested in different types. I had a gentleman call me earlier this week about an outdoor shooting range, solar field, solar farms, you know, potential development in anticipation of the casino. And without fail, one of the first questions they always have is what is the zoning in that area or what's the zoning in that property? And I'll never forget, I had one guy originally from New Jersey, but very thick New Jersey accent. And I said, he asked me about a property. I said, well, actually there's no zoning on that property at all. And he goes, no zoning? I don't even know what that means. So, so I, the reason I say that is I think from an economic development standpoint, most of developers have gotten to a place where they assume that there is a zoning process as part of their project development, you know, but they, they, for example, they also look at utilities. So they're going to look at zoning, but they're also going to look at water and sewer and gas and electric and high-speed internet and things of that nature. So I would say that zoning is probably one part of that broader puzzle.
And the home-based business portion of it, matter of operating business property. Let's say the business expands. I'm thinking about Lynch's farm. Highway one nineteen, they formed and they got into the heavy construction business, build commercial grade structure. So what are the limitations on home-based business? I assume they can't put a Dollar General there without doing conditional rezoning. I think that may be a concern for a lot of farmers, maybe.
Yeah. And I think honestly, that's, those types of details are probably really important for conversations like this to fill in those gaps. Because in that situation, like I told the gentleman earlier, you know, the Highco Lake zoning area specifically says you can donate, you can dedicate fifty percent of your square footage to your, what it calls a customary home occupation. And I think that the intent of the new ordinance is to maintain the same thing. Any of the conversations I had with the county manager and county commissioners and other folks involved in this, we've talked about how a lot of folks around the county have small engine repair operations, you know, lawnmower repair. They all do automotive work from their house. They all have a beauty salon. You know, even my wife made craft paper out of her house, out of our, out of our house for a while. So I know that the intent of the ordinance is to maintain those protections for home-based businesses. It might just be a matter of making sure that the details ensure it or spell out some sort of specific, like the square footage.
That's what I was thinking. The devil's going to be in the details.
Yes. But again, this is the, this is when the opportunity, this is the opportunity the planning board has to say, we want to make these recommendations before we send it back up to the commissioners for final consideration.
Any other thoughts?
I had the exact same question about my own business. It seems like, you know, in general, it sounds like conditional zoning allows you to do most anything you want to do, but then there's a line that you could cross and it's unclear to me where that, where that line goes.
Yeah, like the Woods man said, he, is it working out of four states? He's working out of his home now. But you have zoning and he wants to make a central hub here in Casper Canyon for his business. He's going to have to go through the neighbors, planning board, and everybody else, give permission to build himself.
It ain't going to happen. Probably won't have that.
Yeah, I mean. Ruining their dreams and everything else.
County's going pretty much to can't say the same. Because they don't know what broke the other.
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, but we don't understand your point and then there's just argument. It's still a way to make it work, but anyway, that's, I think our objective is here is what, if, if the commissioners want to consider this, what do we recommend as far as additional details or questions? We don't have a personal opinion on it.
That's, that's a good point, Mr. Hovland. That's what I really think a citizen can put, at least designated, probably going to be some taxpayers in this area, give their input. Of course, we've been discussing HEICO as an example the last couple of years, but if we could at least give input from the citizens, some type of outreach so citizens can see the maps up close and find out where.
Yeah, it's kind of the scene that says southeast. I mean, it looks more like east. I mean, the east part of, of more of the county is.
Anytime you get above one fifty-eight, you are not in the south.
Yeah.
Well, that's certainly a recommendation that the planning board can make too, is to call it something else. The southeast just kind of refers generally to.
Well, I think everybody's thinking Prospect Hill because I mean, this is kind of where it originated. We go kind of zone Prospect Hill, but now it's moved on up to Milton. I mean, it's, I don't know if that many people are aware that the northern eastern half of the county is in that.
So to that point, there will be at some point, community meetings on this, right?
That's up to the commissioners.
At least one, at least one public hearing.
I have a question. I mean.
We've already had, we've already had one in May.
Aren't the county commissioners even worried about what the will of the people were when they voted? I mean, it shot at ninety. How, how do you think people are going to react to this? If you go ahead and circle them. I mean, I'm just asking a, a lively question now, you know, you guys live over in that Prospect Hill district. You should have told them people that.
The county commissioners say that they're all agenda.
I'm in Anderson too, sir.
Could you put that map back up again of the zoning difference?
Yeah.
It was kind of like we voted off or, well, not everybody, but we voted with voter ID, but it stayed in Oklahoma. It took it away. It's, it's not like they're doing the will of the people.
There's the will of the people.
Yeah, I see you lost fifty-two percent. That's the whip right there. Now you can go ahead and tell it either way you want to. That's up to you. You don't have to live.
The area, the area that is zoned.
Yeah, but that's you. That's your area. That ain't mine.
And this does not cover your area.
Yeah, I know, but you should have the decision to make the decision for the whole county.
Should you have the decision to make a decision for these people?
Be on this board because you're a county commissioner.
People that want it?
You shouldn't even be on this board. You were just put here to sway the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I, can I bring up a, a comment about that comment? Well, I think that's completely inappropriate. I think.
Well, it may be. I know that's why we have problems receiving that you want.
But thank you guys. So let's move forward. I think the, we're all citizens. We all do our best to work together. We're going to have different opinions. I think a lot of the confusion came in, but the question on the ballot was for county laws out in certain particular areas. I don't know if that can ever be revisited or if the commissioners would ever, ever want to do that, but I think that's where some of the confusion comes in. Mr. Hovland, when we were having community meetings across the county and then the pandemic hit, can you update us as to the progress you all made as far as how many community meetings were held and then how many were postponed?
That's a great question. One being in Samora. I know that there were community meetings intended for every township in the county. So there were a total of nine scheduled. I believe we did three or four, and interestingly enough, one in February of twenty twenty was canceled for severe weather. There was a bad storm that rolled through the night we were supposed to have the Prospect Hill. So it was actually canceled for reasons not related to COVID. So like I said, I believe we did three or four. Well, and then, and then COVID kind of showed everything.
I think.
And I had to just clarify too, the, the proposal, and this is a separate proposal from what was being presented at that time.
Right, because county laws.
Yes, sir.
Present at that time.
Yes, sir.
Good, good point. So I think it may be prudent since, now, these are the folks that are going to be ultimately affected by this. I think it would be prudent for the counties to give citizen input from these areas. I think it may not be a bad idea to go out and think in, maybe the Leesburg Fire Department, Anderson Fire Department, maybe Prospect Hill, just to, I envision just putting the maps up on the wall and giving the public an opportunity to kind of view the maps, find their property and say, hey, okay, I'm fine with it being zoned that way. Or hold on then, you know, we may have plans to operate business here out of our. They had plans to operate business here out of our own, they had plans to build a commercial structure. Or there may already be an existing business that, that is earned as residential agricultural.
You know, people may not show a little bit of a thing as the government, we hope, an opportunity to.
So what about Samora and Milton?
Well, that's right. That's right. It's going to come up there as well. So I don't know, Mr. Hope, what are your thoughts? So my, my first thought with regards to the context of what we're discussing today is if the planning board wanted to recommend that the commissioners initiate a public hearing, multiple public meetings, multiple public hearing processes, then I certainly think you can include that as part of your recommendations. I don't think that the planning board could take it on their own to host those types of meetings and then make a recommendation to the commissioners. You can include that as a recommendation to the commissioners.
Well, could you run that by the county manager with the county attorney? Because you personally, looking at the map, I, I've heard the rest of the board may feel different. But looking at the map, I do feel like we need to do an inventory of these existing businesses out here and try to update the map accordingly. And I really would like to see citizen input. I know when the town of Gainesville rezones their maps, they send out letters to, I think, every single property. I'm not sure what the statute.
Let me actually pull this up because I think it's important.
Actually went through that, an experience with that might be beneficial to the board. So my father-in-law was Billy Taylor and his welding shop that he ran for, for eons there, right? We inherited that property. Well, during that Gainesville rezoning, I guess the, maybe the paperwork or whatever to transfer ownership, maybe that was in process, but we never saw the notification. We got rezoned to residential. We didn't know it. And a friend that called me up.
That was Billy's welding shop?
Yeah. So I had a friend that called me up and said, hey, by the way, just want you to know that that property got rezoned to residential. I said, I didn't know that. So I had to go to, through the process of, you know, presenting and filling out applications and we finally got, you know, chained back to light enough or whatever the zoning criteria is there now, but.
Were taxes being higher than?
Well.
I, I, I know, but you.
That was not my concern.
Yeah, but I mean.
And if we want to run a business out of it, which we might do at some point, I wanted to strike while the, you know, while the iron was hot versus waiting five years down the road and then trying to do it and then somebody's like, well, I don't think so. I should have come here five years ago. Right? So anyway, my only point there is this process is, you don't want it to be so cumbersome that, that a landowner that wants to open a business is to jump through too many hoops to do it. So I think that process should be streamlined. The, the one thing that I, I guess I was looking at in the presentation, those community meetings, I think, would have a tendency to really make that a complicated process for someone. Because they have to, let's say I own business, I own land and I wanted to open a business that fell into this category, then I would have, it sounds like I would have to organize that, give a report in the next, you know, that's kind of the starting point of that process. That seems like a pretty big burden to, to put on a landowner myself.
Thank you, Mr. Hope.
Well, so Matt, we have, so just to lay out the process, we have 45 days from today to make a recommendation.
I don't, I don't believe that you have to take definitive action today. You could vote to continue hearing this issue. The UDO's guidance is the procedure first, considering an application to the UDO, which this would be. This would technically be a text amendment, which involves a zoning map, zoning ordinance, just things of that nature. If a recommendation is made to the board of commissioners by the planning board concerning an amendment to change the text of the ordinance, the recommendation, recommendation shall be as follows. Adoption of the amendment as written, adoption of the amendment as revised by the planning board or denial of the amendment. And I wanted to reference the state law provision as well. And actually, Mr. Chairman, the question you had earlier about public meetings is referenced in here. So 160D-604 initials only, which this would be, this would be zoning parcels for the first time. In order to exercise zoning powers conferred by this chapter for the first time, a local government, which would be the commissioners, shall create or designate a planning board under the provisions of this article or a special act of the general assembly. The planning board shall prepare or shall review and comment upon a proposed zoning regulation, including the full text of such regulations and maps showing the proposed district boundaries. The planning board may hold public meetings and legislative hearings in the course of preparing the regulations. Upon completion, the planning board shall make a written recommendation regarding adoption of the regulation to the governing board. The governing board shall not hold its required public hearing or take action until it has received a recommendation regarding the regulation from the planning board. Following its required hearing, the governing board may refer the regulation back to the planning board for the recommendation, if they wish, so on and so forth. And then you had a question as well about public disclosure, and this is something that we looked at very carefully after the commissioners made their vote in early June. So this section here for the mail notice, the reason I highlighted the optional notice portion is because it is for the zoning of properties owned by more than 50 people, which obviously this would be, this is north of a thousand, if not more, which requires newspaper run for property owners who own property and live in the county. If there are any property owners who live outside of the county, they would have to be mailed directly. All the adjoining parcels as well, regardless of jurisdiction, also have to be notified. So, you know, a lot of our hypothetical zoning map borders, elements, R and J, person counties, those property owners would actually have to be notified as well. And then there would have to be signs placed throughout the hypothetical zoning district for just regular traffic as a means of notification there as well.
That one is just if a group of 50 landowners.
Correct.
Wanted to do that, that would, that's what that would want.
If the proposed zoning affects more than 50 properties.
That's listed as optional.
Correct. But it's often because, it's optional because the first provision is mail notice. And the mail notice requirement is basically if you plan to zone somebody's property up to 50, you have to mail them direct.
Another alternative, if I recall incorrectly, the minimum of 10 separate property owners who own adjacent or contiguous properties that have a minimum of 16 acres.
I think it's less than that. I get this question all the time. You think I'd have, I would know it by now, but it's something like that. It's.
Take a petition in the county.
10 or 15 properties and 400 or 600 acres.
640.
640.
Yeah, so there are a lot of alternatives here and commissioners, I don't know how much of a hurry the commissioners are looking to have input from us, but me personally, I'd really like to dig into this and this is going to be a complex process. I'd like to get it right moving forward instead of pushing this through and then maybe there's some details that you missed. That's just my first opinion. Any other discussion?
What are, what are, what are our, what is our objective or what are, I guess, for your options here in terms of? One is we could make a list of recommendations and send that back, right? That's option one. What are, what are the other options?
You can adopt, recommend to adopt the amendment as written. You can adopt the amendment as revised by the planning board. So that's where you make your revisions or you can recommend denial.
Mr. Foster, you had, there was some discussion about the Hydo. If this discussion is continued, we could have reviewed the Hydo as well at the next meeting. Matt, just to see how that affects the rules and regulations of the county. Because I really would like to look at aerial view of the map again and measure all setbacks and the buffers, just to see how it affects the county as it is, as it is now.
And just for the, I can give you a quick, I've just dug that up. We were talking about it earlier, but the class ones and class twos that would be allowed in here. You know, a minimum of 10 acres. And then there's operation and let's see. The operation setback would be 150 feet. So that's basically to the that is the inside of their property line to wherever they're doing, you know, it's just the same for both of them.
And the setbacks on the class three are approximately 2,000.
Approximately 2,000.
Okay, so.
1,500 land use spacing. So that's from your property line to a protect facility and then 100 inside of your property.
And, and I think we looked at this last year, but as the boundaries exist in the county right now, we searched the map. And I don't think you could find a tract of land bigger than that to accompany 2,000 feet spacing.
Oh, remember this? That's totally an acre there.
Well, now you could buy multiple parcels.
No, no, there's a ton. There's the majority. There's a, you know, we looked at this. There are tons of parcels that.
Do you remember?
You would say anything. Do you remember which ones that were spent? If you have this, but, but the easy way to find it is you basically go on the GIS and you can run a query for anything that's over 50 acres or 100 acres. And you can build this up.
But, but to me, that 2,000 foot buffer to be 2,000 feet.
Once you get, once you get above 200, 300 acres, keep doing it.
Okay. Matt, you have time to pull up the GIS?
Yeah.
That was a good briefing that Matthew and Stossberg put together. We should get time to do that.
Okay, that's a detail. Yeah, Scott, if I'm wrong, I'll admit it, but yeah, I'm just curious to see.
No, I mean, that was one of the criteria for coming up with those numbers was we can't, we can't prohibit it. Right? State law doesn't allow you to prohibit them. So you have, and, and we didn't also, and the other criteria was don't be outside of what other counties have already passed, right? Because you're just going to open yourself up.
Um, let's just take a look at. Matt, if you could, the right part going in.
On Rin Road?
Yeah. For the proposed.
Yeah, that one is an example. The Hydo does not prevent that property.
That, that's correct. Yeah, but I'm just, I'm looking at it from, I mean, this is one of the larger tracts of land in the county. So how, how would, how would the Hydo affect this property? If there weren't already vested rights there.
Yeah.
So it's got to be 2,000 feet from the property lines, Scott?
No, no, 15, uh, five, 1,500 to the protect facility.
I, I don't know if you, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but like you say, yes, we do get these large pieces of property. All right. You bring in 2,000 feet all the way around. How much property is left that they're operating within the sun? That's, that's what we're saying. You, you're limited on, on some. Your, your, your size of the industry that's going to be inside there.
It all depends on the shape of the property.
Yes, it does, but.
Can you measure that map?
The aerial photography.
Yeah, I'm sure of it. Yeah.
Would you like to measure?
This particular, the example here, right? You have people right there on Rin Road.
Right.
So this, as it stands today, without the owner subdividing this property, the Hydo would prevent them from doing it. But the land is still large enough to where the land owner could subdivide the property and still do it inside of the larger area. Now, this is not a great.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
You can evaluate just because it's so large.
Because I'm just looking at the exist, we were just looking at the existing property boundaries last year. So could you hit the aerial photography, Matt, so we can see where the houses are?
Yeah, and the houses there are the little blue tabs with the address points as well.
So you've got the operation setback and the land spacing buffer, right, Scott?
Yeah.
And if you could, Matt, bring up the measuring tools. I guess you could start in the middle and just measure. So it's 1,500 feet from the operation to raise up.
The operation setback is from a nearby occupied dwelling.
Okay.
To the property.
So that'd be 1,500 feet from that house inward to.
Do you want me to just measure from this house? So that's 1,500 feet there. That's 1,499.
So this is a rule of the Hydo family.
So ideally, the property line would be here.
Right, but we don't.
Or thereabouts to, to set back.
Yeah, I mean, same thing would have to, yeah, they'd have to. Set the property.
But there's also a 500.
Okay, what's, what's the setback on that land? North, that north-south line? Right above.
This line?
That you go to, right, go to the right.
Right there.
Okay, what's, what's the setback?
Inside of it, yeah.
I'm very few and sound like you. All spot, 500 feet all the way to the top. Dwight Scott said he was going to GSI and look at this information.
I'm not sure how much I can draw you a box. So these two lines, so these two lines are approximately.
Okay, that much of that property cannot be used, whatever, right?
Intersection will be a little bit south.
That's got to be, you have to vegetation or whatever.
So that would be your setback.
Right, so there, there.
After you achieved the land use spacing from nearby properties.
Right.
So under this scenario, this is obviously just rough, but they would have to recreate a property line here to make sure that it's enough space from all these.
Right.
Then they get a 500 feet in.
So all that area back to the left would be no value to whatever companies or whatever business is going on here.
Can you get to the right hand side of the property and see?
Sure.
The structure over there?
This house down here is abandoned, running the Kruhko Rin Road. And over here is largely unoccupied as well. There's a few properties here that are near.
But, but Matt, you would have to come over there. You would have to come 1,500 feet over from those residences to the west, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it 1,500 or was it 1,250?
1,050.
Okay, so 1,500 feet from that property would get you to about there. That's 1,508.
But then there's the additional 500.
Yeah, 1,500 or 500 from the property line.
Property line, not additional.
They're going to go back to the property line then.
Well, they would have to recreate the property line, right?
No.
No.
They don't be able to recreate any of the property.
They own that property all the way to the existing line.
Right, but the Hydo, from what I remember, requires a.
Operational.
Operational setback.
Area has to be.
Operational area.
Well, the point is with this one, unless they change the property lines at this facility, they couldn't operate up to the Hydo. They would have to create this, you know.
They just can't operate within 1,500 feet.
But you got to look at the whole property, right? If you violate the setback, then.
They just can't have their operational area 1,500 feet from up there. Otherwise, otherwise you keep moving it in. Otherwise, you keep moving it in.
Nope.
You can't have it. Cascading.
All right, we can talk on this one, but not I understand it, but that's what, that was the way I understood it. You had to be fifteen hundred feet from. From a protected facility, whatever. But if there was no residence, you had to be five hundred feet from the property line, correct?
Inside.
Inside, yeah.
Your operational area. You don't need to move your property lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can move your property line.
But, but what, what a lot of these types of companies do, right, and I'm not talking about any one specific.
As I understand it.
They will purchase the properties surrounding them to avoid this type of.
All you knowledgeable people that don't know this thing, as I understand it, you got to be fifteen hundred feet from a residence, correct? And five hundred feet from a property line. Well, up to the.
Your operational area.
Right. Up to the north, there's no, there's no residence up here. So the fifteen hundred feet is out of play, correct?
Correct.
So he, they still have to stay five hundred feet from their property line, correct?
Correct.
And Scott, yeah, your point is valid, that they can buy multiple parcels and eventually achieve it. I was just looking at the exist, the way it exists now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is a difficult property, but you have. You have a lot of people that live up there on Rin Road that are very close to the property lines of that particular property, right? So that's why.
Well, Matt, I'm like you, I thought, I thought it was five hundred feet from the operations and then an additional fifteen hundred feet.
I, I'm trying to pull up the ordinance now for I to clarify. Yeah, I seem to remember the two-factor measurement, which required a operational setback between the protected facility and the property line. Then the additional.
It's about additional.
You guys just have to leave both of them.
Right.
This is some additional.
Okay.
What is Alaman's buffer? What is their distance?
Okay, it was pretty similar, if I remember.
I was thinking this.
They, they went, they changed theirs in early two thousand. And um. I think they have. I think they have two thousand. It's either fifteen hundred or two thousand, but it's. It's been a while since I looked at it, but that's what the Hido was modeling.
But they originally were eight hundred, or something like that.
They, they, they've been changed multiple times over the years, and they even changed the criteria how they were doing. Because a lot of counties will have just one criteria, right? They would just have from the area of operations to a protected facility. And then some people base it on the property line to protect, so it's a, you can do it a hundred different ways, right? It just. Yeah.
Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to try to continue, uh, because it's, it's through twenty? Do we want to try to continue this discussion until the next meeting? Do we want to make a recommendation now?
If, if we make, if we make recommendations, I guess the thing that I've got down here was. In terms of home businesses, um, I'd like to. Either get defined, you know, where is the limit between. What a home business can be versus not. In my mind, I kind of know it, but I don't think it's written down anywhere, so I think that would be good. And then the map confusion. That I think there should be maps tied to this that actually. Inventory the existing properties and, and indicate that those are. Are light industrial as well.
Matt, would you, I'm sure that would be a huge task for you to take on. Would you be interested in maybe if the Planning Board members wanted to meet with you between now and.
Yeah, absolutely. I would certainly appreciate the help, and, you know, having only been a casual county resident now for about five or six years, I could certainly use institutional knowledge of some. Some locals and knowing exactly where all the important, you know, commercial type business structures are, for sure. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to mention one other thing, too. I forgot to mention it until now. Uh, I received an email on Friday with kind of another revised draft of this from the county attorney. And he had gone through and cleaned some sections up and merged a few things together. So for example, the draft that you have for you today leaves hypothetically exactly as it is, and it adds the new zone at the end of it. His proposal is just merge everything so that, you know, the, where, when the ordinance creates the zoning districts, it just creates them all in the same place. That's probably the biggest example of change that he, um, he sent to me as well. So I think that that's worth consideration because ultimately. You know, the county attorney is going to inform the board. The board is probably going to uh. You know, strongly consider the county attorney's recommendation. I think it may be worth it as well to, for the Planning Board to take this consideration of the county attorney's uh, provision as well.
Could you have that, uh, copy that maybe in the next meeting?
Absolutely, yeah.
And if anyone else, uh, I'll volunteer to meet with you, Mr. Hogan, to help you with inventory, if anybody else wants to meet with us. We got Hido, um, you have to override the Planning Board, you have to leave it to the Planning Board.
So the, the Hido is an ordinance that's mostly administered through my office.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you need more of the board of just.
Yeah.
So those are the main need room, right?
Now, the Commissioners made that.
Okay, so is it worked out by, even make or try to make a recommendation? If the Commissioners still going to keep that way?
Well, yeah, I mean, the Planning Board, it's, well, then you're right to make whatever recommendation you would like, and whatever, I would say whatever you think is important. I would certainly feel free to include that in the recommendation. State law protects your right to do that. Now, the flip side is the Commissioners don't have to listen to it. But, but I, I mean, yeah, absolutely. If you're asking me if I think it's an important part of the process, I absolutely think it's an important part of the process.
Is there any objection? Let's continue this discussion so we can do more research between now and next month.
And doing the inventory would be the, the one piece. What, what else do we want to accomplish?
Come up with a definition of the home-based businesses and then discuss where to get citizen input. What their preferences would be.
And maybe just one example here. So let's say somebody has an auto repair shop in their backyard. Disconditioning, zoning impact that one either. I think that would be one of the company businesses or types of things, right? If somebody's just working out of their house, they use fifty percent of their house for a home business, who cares, right? But if they're using part of a property. You know, let's say somebody has a Ford Mustang.
Yeah.
Right? How does that play in with this? That's the kind of stuff that. I won't, you know, I think, I think we should either make recommendations or come up with a way to define this stuff, but. That, that's where you get into the problem.
I mean, it's sort of like a church. They want to add on more graveyard. I mean, how, how, how do you handle stuff like that?
I think based on what I read, the churches are not part of the church.
Well, you don't pay their taxes, you know, property taxes, you know, not profits, but. Like, what, what, what would they be, categorized, categorized?
Churches, churches and church cemeteries are permitted by right.
Yeah.
Residential agricultural.
Residential agricultural. So you can do it basically.
Church not got to go in front of the planet.
Church's cemetery dollar, it's not going to be affected by any of this.
If a, uh, if a church wants to utilize an abandoned industrial building and rezone it from light industrial to residential agricultural, then it does.
I think, I think for casual county, the biggest thing we have are the people who are doing businesses on their property that. That could get impacted by this unintentionally, right?
These things are hard to miss.
But. So thanks for all the input and discussion today. It's been a long meeting, but, uh, Mr. Foster hadn't forgot about you.
Just to talk to Mr. Hogan about setting up a broadband internet to be moving forward.
I don't think we have time to discuss that today, but it's, it's been on my radar and uh, thanks everyone for being involved and uh, thanks for coming in today. Any other business? Here now, I'm going to take a post to adjourn. So from Mr. Harris, always a favor.
All right, thank you, Chair.
This is overtime, Matt.
This is great. This is what I live for right here.
We'll get a check.
No, everybody.
We'll get a check, we'll do the next check.
Yeah, I'm just in my place.